Uh, reconvene the special former session at this point and ask for certification of the closed session. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott.
Hi.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss. Councilmember Moss?
I'm gonna vote aye, but I'm gonna vote no for the time period between when we started and ten of the hour.
Okay.
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 Do you find that there was something inappropriate? If so, you have to state on the record.
I felt that we moved beyond the scope with the statement. We talked more about the judgment and the actual policy of the city. We moved into the performance discussion of other employees.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero noting Mr. Moss's nay portion, you have certified the closed session in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda the following items. Under resolutions, Resolution C1, resolution referred to the Planning Commission four ordinances to amend the city zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals. A, Section 104, Ray allows civil penalties for the violation of Section 241.2. B, Section 241.2, Ray revocation of grandfather status in the City Council findings. C, Section 1903, Ray permitted uses in the Old Beach Overlay District. D, transition rules for the review of conditional use permits in the Old Beach Overlay District.
Okay, open the public hearing on planning.
Thank you. Under planning, item D1, Elizabeth Ann Gregory for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 635 South Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item D2, Donald Robertson for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 417 16th Street, District 6, Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item three, Martin Plasted, VB Getaway Properties LLC for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 1738 Baltic Avenue in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item four, Martin Plasted, Arctic Trident LLC for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 338 25th and 1/2 Street in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item five, Hanger Holdings LLC for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 207 12th Street, Units 1, 2, 3, and 4 in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item six, Mary Ann Cox for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 905D Pacific Avenue in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item seven, Steve Gorham for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 325 25th Street in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item eight, Richard Fleming for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 2937 Arctic Avenue in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item 10, Kevin D. Bryan for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 209 South Birdneck Road in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item 12, Christopher Thang Tang for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rentals at A, 417 20th Street, B, 421 20th Street, Units A1 and B2 in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item 13, Ship Lap Cottage, The Cove LLC, Rita Marie Surles for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 201 87th Street, Unit A, the agenda says Beach District, that's actually Lynn Haven District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. Item 14, Jackie Yost for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 301 Winston Salem Avenue in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and Mr. Jones are voting nay. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. You can call the roll, uh, for the vote, please, or call the people.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
It's correct, as read by the Vice Mayor.
Yes. So, yes, you're voting yes.
We actually voted for one item in there, but that's to be made clear.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, I apologize. I was looking at Mr. Jones. Councilmember Moss?
Same, aye, but for one nay on the rest.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, we'll move on to the planning items, and we're gonna go with planning item nine, Justice Swango, Jag Investments, Inc. for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at 521 Carolina Avenue, District 6, Beach. Do we have speakers?
The applicant did not sign up. Justice Swango? Or is anyone here for Jag Investments, Inc.? We did not have anyone sign up for this.
Okay. Okay, at this point, a motion, Mr. Tower?
Uh, I move to approve.
Do I have a motion and a second?
Sure.
Okay, discussion, anybody? Mr. Wood?
This is the one, can you put this up on the screen for us? This is the one I have concerns about regarding the, um, the work that was done without a permit and the, the parking, and apparently that corrected driveway still leaves a great deal of inability for people to park legally on the street. So I, I think that that was just a lot of concrete put in just to create additional space for, for the short-term rentals, so I'm not gonna be supporting this one.
I have a question. Is, is the driveway in compliance with the corrections now?
Is he online now? Looks like they're gonna be participating virtually. They're just now logged, they're just now getting connected. Mr. Swango?
Okay. Yeah, Bobby, if you can respond.
Yes, sir. Ms. Abbott, to your question, the driveway has been corrected to align with what's approved by the permit. The, the permit allows for a 20-foot wide driveway entrance at the right-of-way. As you can see in the previously installed version, it was just paved directly to the street. They have then since cut back to make it only 20 feet, hence the flaring out. The flaring out is permitted in this district. There is no maximum lot coverage.
Okay, Mr. Wood. Okay, Ms. Abbott, do you have a follow-up?
So, between, where the green space starts on the, well, my right of the house, I, I can't tell, that would not be sufficient space for on-street parking, correct?
Do you mean off-street parking?
Yeah, I'm, no, on the street. So if somebody wanted to park in front of that house, that, that's parking that's now eliminated.
From?
From where that corner of the green space starts, right there, yeah, to the, to the right.
Yeah, I'm, that's, that would be, so this is the sidewalk here, and this would be an area where they could park.
Okay, so that's sidewalk. Okay. All right, I couldn't tell if that was the sidewalk or not. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
So, if you, the non-compliant driveway installation on the left, that was new construction that they did, the driveway? That's not?
That is, that is correct. This was installed, this was installed incorrectly.
So that's the driveway they did without the permit or outside the scope of the permit?
Yes, sir.
All right, so what is that brown in the middle? Is that green space?
No, sir. That was a, I believe that's a type of, they had a trailer here. I think they had a piece of wood that was sitting there.
So, the only green space then is this little, little piece to the right there?
Yes, sir.
So the rest of, whole rest of the front yard looks like it's impervious?
Yes, sir.
And do we have the applicant on the line?
Yes, Justice Swango. I understand that the applicant has their microphone muted, and we do not have the capability to unmute that mic, so we need the applicant to unmute their mic if they would like to make comments. Justin Swango? And we, we do not have control of that. We cannot unmute their microphone.
Okay, any other, this, yeah.
Do we have a phone number for them or something? They didn't call them with a phone number. Staff doesn't?
Well, they're online, and I'm asking them to unmute their microphone.
Send them a text?
But they're...
No, but my question is, I'm sure staff probably has their phone number.
I, I don't have, they didn't call and register to speak with me at all.
I understand, but I'm saying they, they made an application for CUP.
I don't have their information, sorry. He's talking unmuted.
Are we able to procure the phone number?
We just proceed to another agenda item while they try to work that out?
I think we got a motion and a second. We have.
We can disable the motion and bring.
We have somebody here who seems to have the phone number. I'm not sure what we would, we?
I can't.
To unmute their microphone if they want to.
He could hear me if he's online. He should be able to hear what I'm asking him to do.
Would you like me to put you on speakerphone?
That can't happen. We can't take his phone, comments over.
I have Mr. Jason Swango.
We can't do that.
His technical difficulties on his end won't allow him to unmute it?
But there is a call-in number that he can use, right, for Weback?
Yes, and he should have that number on his invitation.
So he can call in?
We can't take his comments that way.
Okay, is there, can we repeat the number from Mr. Swango?
He has it on his invitation. I, I don't have that. He has a specific reservation number.
Okay. Did you hear that, Jason? There is on your reservation instruction, there's a specific.
I would move we table this motion, which means we can bring it back anytime during the meeting, and we move on. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Does that require a vote, or do we?
Does that require a vote?
Do we have a motion to table?
It's essentially just, just in advance until you bring it back later this afternoon. You, you need to do something with it before we leave, but you don't have to do something with it at this moment.
Okay, so you have a motion to table?
Number 11, yeah. It's just, it's a privilege motion, we can move on and put another item and come back.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to have a vote to move?
Yes, sir.
No? Okay. Okay, let's move on to item number 11 at this point. Joshua J. Coe, trustee Joshua and Kimberly Coe, joint revocable living trust for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental, 407 18th Street, Unit D, District 6, Beach.
Joshua Coe?
I'm president. May it please the council may have removed my mask so I can order the.
Oh, yes, you can.
Thank you. My name is Joshua Coe. I, the owner, my wife and I own the property at 407 18th Street in Virginia Beach. We were under the impression for months now that it was approved by planning. We have followed all the laws that were required and promulgated by the City Council. In fact, Mr. Tower, at a civic leading meeting on February 24th, 2020, at the Rescue Quad, stated, all the ones, according to the, of the ones that would be the short-term rentals in the pipeline, in the pipeline, and approved by planning, were going to be passed unless, one, there's a violation or opposition. I have not had any violations on my property and no opposition as well. I have to remind you, the council, we, we purchased this property in 2009. At the time, there was no Vibe District. It was an area, we, we were Colorado kids. I came out here so I'd go to law school. Where, at the time, people said, "Don't buy there, it's a dangerous area." Shortly after we purchased, Mr. Powell, Charles Powell and Brent purchased the property next to us, and they built their fine art or their interior design studio. We all know Mr. Powell. He started the Vibe. He did a great thing for Virginia Beach and the Beach Borough District. He started the Vibe District, and that whole area changed. I want to remind you, my property, to tell you where my property is situated, ladies and gentlemen, the council. Next door is a commercial space, which is a credit processing company. Across the street is a tow lot. Next to that is Mr. Thumble's Warehouse, where he, Thummles, where he has his cars stored. Next to that is the Davis Company, which is a advertising company. We have a lovely couple in the house that have not opposed to this, that are for it, that his, the, the husband has passed, but he was the last lighthouse operator at Cape Story. And then next to that, we have the Altmeier Funeral Home. A half-block away, you can see in that picture, is the Beach Dome Project, where a surf park will be, if everything goes as planned. I understand we're in a weird time where things happen we didn't plan on. I say that to impress upon you that this is prime for what its purpose for, and that's for a vacation rental. There is not residential issues around there. Behind that is 19th Street, which the city has gone great measures to rip up the street, do the stormwater, to get in preparation for all the commercial activity the city wants to plan to put in there. I will say, I was quite surprised in the informal hearing which I was on, listening to over the computer where Councilman Tower said, "Would not approve this one because of the screwy parking." There is no screwy parking in this complex. There's an oversized two-car garage, which I think they showed a picture of it. Our driveway, we have 69.2 feet of parking in our driveway. That is for my unit. If you take 69.2 divided by the 18 feet, that is 3.84 vehicles that can fit in that driveway, on top of an oversized two-car garage where two vehicles can fit. So that is the minimum of five vehicles that can fit in my parking situation. So I understand, through the council members who are opposed to short-term rentals, and they have that right, but then one was opposed because of a parking situation. I want to show you, there is no parking situation. In fact, when I purchased this property 11 years ago, I bought it because it had the best parking, I would say some of the best parking in the whole Beach Borough District in Virginia Beach. We have a 69-two-foot driveway, an oversized two-car garage, which is very rare in that district of, of the beach. A little bit about myself, I, I'm an attorney. I founded a law firm called East Coast Trial Lawyers. I have invested a lot in the city. I love the city. I sit on the board of directors for VB Home Now, which I think we all know VB Home Now is coming to partner with you to help the homelessness of the city. I also, before I was involved with that, I was involved in helping the homelessness because the Unit A in that picture is owned by a great friend of mine, Jim White, and we used to see the homelessness walk back and forth in front of a complex. So Jim formed the Jim White Fitness, Fitness Foundation, targeted to help the homelessness, people in need with fitness and nutritional needs. I've been on that board for close to eight years now. I also serve on a board that helps teens with adolescent males with substance abuse through a ministry called Teen Challenge out of the Mid-Atlantic. My law firm, we represent a lot of nonprofits that help this city improve. I think one of my colleagues who's in my firm, Steve Lynch, is working with the city on a ministry initiative to help improve the city. So I say all that not to impress you, but I want to impress upon you, everything's been followed with this unit. I am a law-abiding citizen. This is my property. This city was founded, and that emblem was founded because people didn't have property rights in England. More importantly, they didn't have rights to celebrate a religion they wanted to, so they came across the ocean, planted across in this city over 400 years ago. That's the essence of the city. We have property rights. I understand the city passed the laws, and their laws have all been followed through and approved by planning on this unit. So I just urge City Council to follow the laws which it has passed and honor those properties that have been following them dutifully. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. Can you bring the parking situation back up? Mr. Coe, if you could explain, so in the event that Unit A is, does Unit A use the same driveway?
It only has, Unit A has a garage that ingress, ingress out of the garage only. The whole...
Are they permitted, I guess, I'll get right to my point. Are they permitted to block that?
They are not permitted to block. And I, I did print, I didn't make enough copies. I have, this is off the city assessor's page of the diagram of the property that shows the actual, actual two foot, so I didn't make up the 69.2 feet. I didn't go measure it. I went off the city records. But no, Unit A cannot block our property. We have never had an issue. In 11 years I've owned that property, in social gatherings I had in my own life, I ever had an issue with Unit A in my unit parking.
I, I think the concern is that if Unit A changes ownership at some point, there might be a conflict in terms of if they're blocking, what is their portion of the driveway? How does a visitor get out? And then there potentially becomes a bigger issue, but I appreciate that you have a good relationship with those, those.
Yeah, and I have a very good relationship with the, the tenant in Unit A.
So is this a, or do you guys have like a condo unit?
Yeah, so for, I'm actually the president of the condo associations, is for units. Everyone is for this. I would say a lot of us may have purchased this property 11 years ago thinking someday this would be perfect for vacation rental, because this is in the heart, and the City Council has talked and may rehash this in prior meetings about the resort overlay district. This was in that.
So, but in those, in your condo docs, does it say you, that Unit A cannot block that driveway?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
It cannot block it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
What's the, can you put the parking up here, please, Tower? What's the width of that driveway?
Width of the driveway is over nine feet. It meets the code requirements. The code was nine feet by 18 feet. I believe that width is about 12 feet.
Okay, so.
And let me see if I have it on the assessor.
Nine by 18 is the size of a parking space, not the driveway. So, the, looking at that, my, my concern frankly is the use of the two garage parking spaces for this. I'd be fine with this if it was a, if it was only a two-bedroom, but those other two are, are what I have a problem with, because I don't think people are gonna use those. I think it's a very tight turn. If it's, it's gonna be very difficult for people to park in there, and, and I think people on vacation just aren't, aren't gonna mess with the hassle of trying to do that, and I think we're gonna end up having cars stacked out there. So that, that's my concern.
If I may respond?
Yes.
We've had many tenants use it in vacations that use a two-car garage and plus park, and we've never had a problem. There's a wide enough opening there. I've parked two vehicles in there, my, personally, myself.
So this is like current, it's currently being rented as a short-term rental?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
How long has it been rented?
We, it's, well, it's on a month rental right now.
I mean, how long has it been operated as a short-term rental?
For the past year. We filed everything. We believe we're grand, under the grandfather. We found out we were 24 days shy of that, so we filed the application. We've been forth with, I've been paying taxes on it dutifully, on time, for every month, provided a lot of money to the city, and followed all the laws and planning that was promulgated by the city a little over a year ago. And I want to commend Ms. Peebles with planning. She was very professional through the process, through the planning commission part, and everyone involved in the city's been fantastic through this. So I want to commend the city.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
So, your property is not grandfathered, correct?
It is not.
So you've been operating as a short-term rental without authorization to have a short-term rental?
I was under the understanding I was allowed. I disclosed that with planning. I said, they said, "Keep doing it, because it's going to be approved."
Who told you to keep doing it?
Yeah, I'd like to know that person's name.
I, I provided all the information. I paid taxes on it. I, I haven't disguised this.
Well, honestly, you did. I have further questions for legal staff later, but none for you. Thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you at this point. Appreciate it. Any other speakers?
No, no other speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Tower, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I do.
Excuse me?
Do we have a hand motion? No, that was the other, I'm sorry.
No, we don't have a.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm happy to make the motion to approve it. I, I can understand how I got to be the bad guy on this, but I'm moving to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
We don't have a second yet, do we? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Rouse. I apologize.
Okay, any discussion?
John, did you have something on?
I would just want, as a follow-up, not as part of the vote, but I do want to hear from the city attorney, number one, and two, I'd like to understand whether or not it's a planning practice. Hope it's not, but whether or not we are telling people that, oh, this is gonna be approved, and I'd just like to know how people operate that require conditional use permits, and we haven't approved them yet, just what all the legal rationale for that is, and if, okay, well, but I'd like to be educated on how that is. And if staff grants something, how does staff have the authority to grant something that isn't consistent with an ordinance that we've adopted?
We'll certainly look into that, but it would help if we had a name of someone who purportedly said to keep doing it, so that would help us.
I'm more generic, because I know we'll never find that out, but my question is whether or not an agent acting on behalf of the city in this, in any instance like this, could issue and grant on their own authority, and not enforce an ordinance that we have relative to this operation, no matter what operation it is. It's a generic question.
Mr. Moss, no statement by staff would have the effect of granting the CUP. That can only be granted by this body. I don't know what the conversation was. I don't know what was said or what wasn't said. What I can tell you is though, there has been a practice historically, since before I was city attorney, of when you discover that a use is in place that doesn't have the required CUP, that staff will typically allow that use to continue until the council takes up the issue and either approves it or rejects it, and if the council rejects it, then they take enforcement action. And in fact, with respect to STRs, that's essentially what you did when you grandfathered all of those, because there was nothing to take enforcement action on before.
Correct, but this clearly was not a grandfather application. So I guess what I'm asking now, thank you for the explanation, is how many other properties are operating that aren't grandfathered, who are operating on the condition that until we say no, they have yes? I, I'd just like to know, and how we have an enforcement mechanism, given Mrs. Henley's point, that tells us what that is.
It may be okay, but I think we should consciously understand what that exposure is, and that we are consciously doing that.
Well, and, and, and I won't speak for planning, because I don't know the answers to that question, but I would say, we are constantly finding these, and when we, when, I, I believe when, and Bobby can speak to this, but I believe when planning staff finds one that they didn't know about before, they tell them they have to come in and get the CUP, and I don't think they tell them they can't operate until that's ruled on. I, I may be wrong.
Well, later, Mr. Sm, I'd like to have that discussion, because I think we should consciously be providing that direction. It shouldn't be in the sense of the staff to make.
We can do that. Mr. Wood?
Can you pull up the parking one again? So, and the applicant could come back up. So, you've got the highlighted yellow, does that represent the parking that is for just your unit?
Yes, yes, Councilman. That, all the yellow is.
What about the stuff below that? So, so, so below the, below the yellow, you've got hashed, a hash mark going down?
That is Unit A's ingress egress in and out of their driveway, or their garage. Unit A cannot park in that. That, we have an ingress egress right to the full yellow part.
So Unit A could, has to pull in through that way through the garage?
Yes.
In theory, they're not allowed to block it. What is the area to the right of Unit B?
That is all a green space, Councilman.
It's green space?
Yes. So an open green space.
So really, just parking in the driveway, you could put three in the driveway?
Under the current code, we can put, yes, three vehicles. I think the calculation comes to 3.84 to be exact, but three can fit in the driveway, and then two can fit in the garage.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Abbott?
I don't have a question for the applicant. Bobby, I have a quick question about our process. When we review short-term rentals that have a condo, condominium association, do we request a copy of their bylaws as a part of the process?
Since we do not enforce their bylaws, we do not require a copy of it. However, we do require for if there are less than five condominium owners, that they get the signature of all of the, of the condo owners that are, that way they're aware of the, of the application, and if it's more than five, then the, then the condo association has to sign up. They're aware of the, of the application itself.
But in for the, in this situation, you know, we can't verify that there is not a, that, that, that Unit A can't park in their driveway? To block Unit B. I mean, I understand why that would be most likely. I'm just trying to get, it's not really about this applicant, because I'm, I'm already decided where I'm at on it, but in terms of future reference, when we have this situation where the parking setup is unusual, we're not, I guess you've already answered my question. We don't, we don't look for condo docs to confirm any of that.
We don't. Now, we do check to see if the plaits show ingress egress easements, and we do bring that up to the applicant as, as we're reviewing it. In this case, if there was someone that was, that was blocking their entrance, whether it be through a short-term rental or through just normal access, they would, they would have conflict with each other anyway, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, yeah, I guess we have a motion and a second. Are we ready for? Move forward here.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
I am abstaining from this item because I have been represented by Attorney Cohen a matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of six to four, with Ms. Wooton abstaining, this item has passed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, did we, did we have any contact with the, um, party in, uh, item nine?
Yes, Justice Swango.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Thank you. Justice Swango.
Hello? Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, please begin your comments. We can hear you.
Okay, um, I don't really know what comments you guys are looking for. Um, do you guys have any questions about the property?
Any questions for the applicant?
Can we just show the audience that's watching the pictures like we would normally, please? Thank you.
Do you have the? Thank you. For pulling them up.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any questions or discussion with the applicant from any member of council? Okay, uh, being done, if, uh, you know, unless the applicant has any other remark, uh, we'll, we'll get, we'll move forward.
Ms. Swango, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Her mic is unmuted, they say, so.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Okay, at this point, yeah, at this point, let's call for the question. The applicant, you know, uh, asked us if we had any and there were no responses, so let's go ahead and move forward.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tower and a second by Mr. Rouse.
To approve.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussions? I'm out.
Nope.
Well, I, I guess I just have a question. Councilmember Wood expressed some concern about the parking. I wonder if you could put the picture back up for just a minute. I'm curious to know more about what are your objections and concerns about the parking? And then further, to add to additional questions, I'd like to know, well, first of all, how many parking spaces is this? So that's my second question. And is it three or four? And then the other issue is, or at least something for us to consider, is that is our parking requirement as we move more and more into adopting short-term residential rentals in residential areas going to result in having parking like this where we're taking away green space and, and just to accommodate the parking?
So, yeah, if you want, I'll answer my, my response while I'm, I'm voting no on this. And I, I would love to be able to see what this looked like prior to the, to the illegal installation and then the subsequent correction of that. Uh, I imagine it probably wasn't concrete, you know, corner to corner like it is now. And, and I think this is exactly the, the thing that frankly you and, and Ms. Wooton talked about a few meetings ago regarding impacts in the neighborhood. And, and, and this, this has taken the entire front yard for parking. And, and, you know, I mean, we talk about flooding, we talk about all this stuff. And that is a giant pile of impermeable sur, impermeable surface that, that water is not going to, to go through. And that, that's significantly more parking than you would see in a, in a typical house there. So that, you know, identifies this in this neighborhood as being something different. And, and, and that, that's, that's why I have an issue with it. But again, I don't know if staff has a picture of what it looked like prior to the first driveway install versus now. Because I know you said the first driveway was installed without a permit and then the second driveway was fixing it.
The previous driveway was.
It's a good Google Earth.
The previous driveway, and I apologize, it's not, I'm looking at it from a, uh, from Google Street View, was about a 10-foot-wide driveway that was only accessed through here to the front of the residence. So from here on, it was only 10-foot wide.
Seems to me we're incentivizing applicants to pave their front yards in order to create parking to accommodate the operation of short-term rentals.
You are correct. Yeah, so if, if I could, Mr. Tower.
No, go right ahead.
So I just pulled it up on Google Earth and it's basically to the, um, that, that piece of plywood or whatever it is in the middle there on the left picture, it was just to the left of that. It was just a driveway to the left of that and nothing to the right of that tree or plywood was, was there. So it's, it's probably, I don't know how many square feet of concrete, probably another 20 feet by four, probably eight or 900 square feet additional concrete.
It was grass.
Okay.
It used to be grass.
And, and is there a, could, is there a Google Earth image? Or should I pull it up on my phone?
Uh, Howard, can you pull it up?
Uh, if you give me like two minutes, I could get it pulled up.
Okay.
Five twenty-one.
I'd like to see the context of the neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
While they're doing that, that's when we adopted the resolutions earlier today dealing with asking the planning commission to look about compliance uses and permitted uses. You may recall when we had this initial vote, at least most people in the dais were here. And when Councilmember Jones, and he talked about it last Tuesday, we decided to allow by conditional use permit anywhere in the city to have short-term rentals. That's what we did. And I said at the time, and so did Mr. Jones, I think, Mrs. Henley, that this blanket conditional use permit would be our own undoing in terms of the impact in our neighborhoods and we're seeing it. And yes, we have created an incentive in the marketplace, a financial incentive, to basically undo the quality of our neighborhoods. And so, but there wasn't anything in the resolutions that we asked the planning commission to do other than to try to fix the Beach District specifically to protect Green Ron, to protect Lakewood Forest, to protect Homestead, to protect any place in the other, in the community, that they would have a right to choose a destiny where they wanted to potentially become a future hotel district. And that's, I think, the heart of what I heard Councilmember Berluci talking about is enforcement is one thing, which I think we've given ourselves a false impression. It's a whole nother thing. We have done nothing to give the, put the people back in charge, except for maybe this one neighborhood, in charge of, being in charge of the destiny of their community. And that, I, I'm happy to join you, Mike, on bringing back, that gets us to that point because it isn't so much controlling the things they are because we're not getting lots of complaints. It's the contagion that's spreading that is the bigger threat than compliance. And, and we didn't address that issue, uh, tonight at all, but we need to. And Mike, I'd be happy to co-sponsor something with you to that effect.
Yeah, Michael.
Well.
Mr. Berluci.
Recurrent flooding is a known issue. And I don't know exactly where, um, what the flooding landscape looks like at this address. But if this occurred, this pavement occurred in the front yard of a Windsor Woods neighborhood, it would contribute, it would exasperate an existing problem. And our policy is incentivizing that, just that. So I can't, I can't support this.
Mr. Rouse?
Well, I think it's important that we, you know, we continuously iron out the, the kinks in legislating short-term rentals. And it's important that we keep the, um, identity of our neighborhoods intact. I do find this, um, that it would be currently a misstep to, you know, look at different applicants and hold us in different standards, um, throughout the short-term rental process. I don't think that's fair, particularly when we talk about impervious services. And we're looking at this particular applicant, um, we should look at this particular, particular applicant and judge it on itself, on its, on its merits, not hold it accountable for legislation that we put in place when it comes to short-term rentals. I, I agree with you all. The concerns are there and they are legitimate about keeping our neighbors safe. But when we're looking at this particular applicant, we don't know how the runoff water in that particular, um, this particular application, how that affects, um, the drainage system in that neighborhood. So, um, with that being said, you know, I, there's a motion on the floor, so I would like to move forward with the motion. Thank you.
So this is, this is the Google Earth? Can you, can you scroll down to see the other ones on the street?
Can we look at it from a satellite view though, above?
I'm looking at it on Google Earth and it, you can see that the whole neighborhood looks like this, except for this one property. Jessica, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I, um, could you move closer? I mean. Put my mic on. I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Moss and Councilman Berluci. I don't think it's right to incentivize residents particularly in, you know, neighborhoods where the houses are so close together to, to, um, to pave their, their front yards. But as you move towards Baltic, I see another driveway that looks just like the one that we have right here where it looks like there's at least three spaces at the corner of Baltic and Carolina. And then the house immediately to the right of the applicant, I mean, they look like they have their fair share of, of driveway. And if you zoom out a little bit more on the other side of the block, there's, it, it does look like there is standing for having a lot of driveway in this particular part of the, the neighborhood. Um, but I also don't, I don't like the idea that somebody would say, hey, I want to rent my house, so we're going to add a, we're going to add a parking lot. That's concerning. Um, but I also don't know that it's that far out of the characteristics of the neighborhood either.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Rouse?
If you could pull that back up, I would just, same thing as Abbott, um, pointed out. I mean, you've got to sound redundant, but right down on Carolina Avenue, um, there's a lot of driveways that are quite wide and seem, they seem as though they can fit a lot of cars in there. Um, as well, if the applicant in itself, that driveway itself looks like a, um, underutilized driveway. It was very thin itself, so it looks like they just expanded it to, I guess you can say, bring on par with some of the character of the neighborhood. I just, I don't think that the expansion of the driveway necessarily is, is out of the characteristics of this neighborhood, particularly when you look at this Google map image. And there's two or three properties with wider driveway with much more, uh, impervious surfaces.
Hey, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I understand people's comments on it. I would just go back to what Mr. Berluci said. I think this is, um, impacting the, uh, impacts of neighborhood. There, there are some other places that have wider driveways, but I don't see a single one on that street that has a driveway that, that basically covers the entire front yard. So that's, that's my concern with this.
Ms. Wilson?
I think we need to ask our question. Would they have paved their entire front yard if it wasn't for a short-term rental?
Okay. Okay, anybody else at this point? Uh, Ms. Wooton?
And then my question is, if they did pave it for that reason, then for us to say, well, we're not going to approve it, that they did it because there was a requirement, how can we go back and say we're not going to approve it when they're in line with what we asked them to do?
I, I don't think it's a requirement. I think the staff said they did the driveway without a permit. Is that, where's, where's Mr. Taylor? Can you give us a history of the driveway?
Uh, based on my understanding of the, of when I noticed the driveway being installed, uh, it was started without a permit. They did obtain a permit showing the correct size. The, the initial install of the driveway was incorrect, which was the picture on the right, on the left. And they since subsequently corrected the driveway to be in compliance with the permit. I will say in the, in the zoning classification that it's in, with the majority of zoning districts, the residential zoning districts that have single-family and duplex lots, the limitation is only at the right-of-way where you have a limitation of a 20-foot-wide driveway. Unless there's an impervious coverage requirement in that zoning classification, there's nothing that would stop someone, if this was not a short-term rental, to do what they have, what they have done.
Before you depart, if I could just.
Yes.
Question? But no time in the process, the staff would have made a representation for the fact that they corrected their driveway and got a correct permit that that would entitle or they should expect approval of their project. Would that be a correct statement?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you very much. Do we have a disclosure or statement that's on all applications for short-term rentals? It makes it explicitly clear that they, that there should be no expectation that their project should be approved or it's subject to approval of council? Is there some disclaimer statement?
The general conditional use permit application does state that. I'll have to see if it's, if it's called out again specifically on this.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Rouse?
Okay. Just hearing a message at, um, just, I can never pronounce your name, right? I'm sorry. Tom, I should know it by now, right? Um, like you said, in this particular, it's zoned for, I mean, anybody can pave their whole front yard. Any, you know, can pave the whole front yard, make it whole concrete because there's nothing that prohibits them from doing so. So with that stand for, um, I'm agreeing to approve this.
Yeah, we're ready for the question.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott? I have a general comment and then I'll, I'll cast my vote. I, I'm going to vote aye on this. I, I am very concerned about the incentivization of paving our driveways. I do think we need to coordinate, whether it's with planning, since we're, we've already referred some stuff back to them, um, on what we expect in terms of what an additional impervious surface looks like on these lots. Um, I don't want to see applicants trying to meet the parking requirement by adding driveway that they wouldn't have normally added. That said, you know, I could see that if that's a four-bedroom home and, you know, maybe they have older kids and they want to start adding driveway because their kids are going to start parking their car and they don't want to be on the street. I can see, I mean, I know there's a number of houses in my neighborhoods that had two-car driveways that went to four-car driveways and have the big aprons. And, uh, you know, I, and that's not my personal taste, but I, I do know that that happens in other areas of the city for, for residential, um, uses that are not being used for short-term rentals. So I think we have a consistency issue if we would permit it as a, what a normal resident would do. I, I don't know that that can be the hangup we have here in this process. So maybe we need an additional guideline that says, you know, we have to be, we have to be cognizant of what kind of, um, changes they're making to the property to come into compliance with our code. But aye. Councilmember Berluci?
No.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
No.
Councilmember Moss?
No.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
No.
Mayor Dyer?
No.
By a vote of four to seven, this application has been denied.
All righty. And then, uh, moving on to item 15, uh, Susan Marley, Susan, uh, Susan E. Marley, Susan E. Marley and Louis E. Gorman for a conditional use permit, short-term rental at 629 14th Street, District 6, Beach.
So, um, the applicant did not register with my office, but I do understand that they have joined the web app. So Susan Marley, if you would like to begin your comments.
Okay, if you could, uh, state your name for the record, please?
Susan Markley, not Marley, Markley.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you have a picture of my property. It's a small cottage, and I did extend the driveway when I bought it, which I would have done even if I bought it for my own use. And it does fit two cars, but it doesn't meet the requirements that the city, um, there it is, the, with the blue shutters. So I extended the driveway forward. It does fit, fit two cars, but it doesn't meet the requirements for the city for a short-term rental. So in the interim, I have purchased a parking in the Ninth Street Garage. Usu- usually the only people who use my property are a couple or a couple with two kids. It's a very small cottage. You wouldn't have two couples. But I have, in the, in the meantime, purchased, um, in the Ninth Street Garage parking, if there are two cars.
Okay. Okay, any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Ms. Abbott?
Do, when you, um, list your property, what is the, um, max occupancy that you permit?
It's two bedrooms, four max.
So, and that's for, for adults max?
I have never had four adults. It's usually it's a couple and maybe kids.
And their kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're not bringing their own car?
Yeah, because my one room has bunk beds. I don't know if how many adults would want to sleep in a bunk bed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Do we have somebody on the phone?
I believe it's, is it the applicant, your, Mr. Gorm?
I don't know if you want to pull up the, I am the small cottage and he is the bigger house to the left. And we both just recently bought our houses within the, since last June. So we're a condominium, but we really have no, nothing to do with each other.
Okay.
He did sign off on my short-term rental.
So he is the applicant?
Okay.
No.
Just, Mr. Gorm, would you like to make some, make comments? He's unmuted. Uh, Mr. Gorm, if you'd like to make comments, you can begin. He's not responding.
It's not responding, okay. All right, at this, okay, Mr. Wood?
Can you bring up the, uh, parking photo on this one? Because I noticed the Planning Commission mentioned a lot about this one, so you say that car will actually fit in there?
I'm sorry?
You said, you said two cars would fit in there?
Yes, two cars will, and I have pictures to prove it, but it's short on the, uh, when I looked up, when I bought the property a year ago, it said, um, one off-street parking spot will be required. It had no dimensions, otherwise I would not have bought, bought the property. There were no dimensions as of April 22, 19, and I bought the property on April 30th.
No dimensions where? What are you talking about?
I looked up on Virginia Beach, um, Airbnb rules.
So I mean, like nine by 19 is a, is a standard parking space, so how, how long is your driveway that doesn't go out into the, um,
The sidewalk, it's 30 feet. It's nine feet wide and 30 feet long.
Okay, so, so your, your driveway is 30 feet long?
Yes.
Okay, so it's eight feet short?
Sixty.
Six.
Sixty.
Eight, nine, do the math.
Eighteen and eighteen is thirty-six.
Yeah, it's nine by nine, okay. So it's six, so six feet of a car would be sticking out onto the?
Not if you pull the two cars forward, which I have pictures of, but according to the council's requirements, but I have pictures with two cars comfortably parked in there and they are not encroaching on the sidewalk. My neighbors, who are not short-term rental people, are encroaching on the sidewalk, by the way.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Berluci?
I have a question for Mr. Tahan. There's two parking spaces required for this application, correct?
Yes, sir.
And one of those spaces comfortably fits in the driveway. The other one is questionable whether or not it does, or it's demonstrating here that it doesn't. The applicant has told us that she purchased a space in the garage. Does that satisfy the second car requirement?
If the council chooses to approve it, the staff has not been comfortable with approving, uh, parking that's more than a quarter mile away from the site. Based on our measurements, is, uh, this parking space is the, that they have for their second space is about a half mile away.
Okay. Hey, Ms. Abbott?
What's this total square footage of the house? Or the living space?
Like 900 feet.
900 square feet?
Yeah, it's very tiny. I'm pretty sure it's 900.
I, I, I-
It says 577.
500? Oh, it's half of that.
Well, I, the, the reason I ask, I, I find it hard to believe that we're going to see any more than one car coming to rent this property to begin with. I don't think, uh, I think a family, maybe my family size would consider it because it, I have small children, but I, I can't see anybody thinking, oh, I'm going to go vacation in Virginia Beach and, and, uh, oh yeah, we're going to bring, we're going to carpool and bring a couple, bring, you know, caravan to Virginia Beach and stay in a 500, 600 square, heck, a nine foot, 900-foot square foot cottage. I don't think you'd see more than one car pull up to, so, um, I don't know if, if we've called the question yet, but.
And what's, what's going to happen if it, it can't be a short-term rental, it's going to become a long-term rental, and then for sure, you would probably get more than one car, if it's a couple purchasing the home, uh, renting the home.
Mr. Moss, is a question for the applicant?
I'll wait for the discussion.
Okay. Uh, at this, uh, anybody else? Uh, question for the applicant? Um, okay, Mr. Tower, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I'm going to, um, somewhat reluctantly, but follow the guidance from the staff and the Planning Commission and move to deny this for the reasons that have been fully discussed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now discussion. Mr. Moss?
One point I wanted to make is that we, good, bad, or indifferent, that's the standard of two spots. There's only one, so it seems to me like if we were doing something, we'd be do, making some other kind of variance. Maybe that's a process, but, you know, just one more little nick and it gets harder to be looking. And, and on your point, if we remember back to the old light rail days, not to bring up a dead horse, so to speak, but the standard in there is that people generally won't walk more than a quarter of a mile. That is a pretty standard, like a pedestrian about buses and stuff of that nature for, and I mean, it's just a legit, it's a legitimate, you know, standard you can go out and look. So I do, just point to Mike's point about the distance, and I think we talk about that half a mile is a pretty big distance. And I can't deal with what people do when they own a place, but they park their car in the sidewalk. I know my neighborhood people do call the police, so that's another issue of compliance, but it isn't a reason in and of itself to not hold of the two parking spots.
Mr. Tower, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm really not unmoved, pretty much unmoved by the, by the additional spot. I understand why the applicant did it and I, uh, she has my sympathy for, because I know we have given them, but the distance between this place and the other is just too far. I was more moved by the, by the how many cars actually fit in there, but, uh, I, I just can't get around that. We're going to have, we've had and will have many more, many other applicants or, our assembly situated do not want to encourage people to think that we take these parking, uh, regulations lightly. They're one of the few, you know, bright line tests that we have that helps us keep, uh, some level of consistency.
Okay, motion and second. Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Wood and then, or Ms. Wood?
So is, is there a possibility, and this is a question for either Mark or Bobby, to, um, change this so it's a, oh, it's approved as a one-bedroom? Can we do that? Because I'm kind of going with what Jessica says. It's, it's 577 square feet. It's a tiny house. I mean, I understand it needs two cars, but I can't imagine.
It's bigger than that. It's two stories.
Well, it says 577 on the right.
Doesn't look like two stories on Google.
No, just an attic space there. I don't know, depends on which one of these houses it is, but.
Well, it's got the measurements there. It's a 28, uh, there it is.
Which one is?
Blue shutters.
And what's the other picture? Go, go to the next picture.
That's, that's the house next to it.
Well, what's that one to the left?
That's the house next to it.
That's the, that's, uh, Mr. Gorm's house.
The applicant's house is right past it there. You can see the corner of it.
Okay. So is, is it possible to approve it for a one-bedroom?
The council can impose conditions. I know Mr. Stiles has said that before. Uh, to limit it, it would be difficult for us to monitor, but, uh, once we have onboard our monitoring system, which we should get soon, um, we can see what they're advertising it for.
Mr. Tower, you're, oh, wait a minute. Let's, uh, let me acknowledge Ms. Wooten first and then Mr. Tower.
I just have a quick question for you, Mr. Tahan, so I can establish some consistency, because we have approved short-term rentals with when they go in rent, you know, at off-site parking. So in the past, since we've approved them, but not inclined to approve it this time, is the issue because it's too far to walk, or how many miles, or, because I don't see the consistency?
So, yes, ma'am. So, uh, before we move forward with the application and do a recommendation, we do an analysis of the parking with Mr. Kemp, the zoning administrator. One of the, for those that utilize off-site parking, uh, staff has used the distance, as Mr. Moss had noted, as a quarter mile, as what we're comfortable recommending approval on. So all the other off, all the other off-site, uh, parking that has been recommended for approval by staff has been within a quarter mile of the location.
All right, thank you for clarifying that, because I, I, I didn't understand that to be a consistent.
Yes, ma'am.
Here, so thank you.
Hey, uh, Mr. Tower, I think, you know, is somebody willing to make a friendly amendment for Mr. Tower to consider, or, you know, the, I think there was a discussion of, you know, putting a, uh, restriction on it for?
Well, I was just going to say, I think the monit, I hope the monitoring system can cover advertising of a different number of bedrooms than we've approved. Um, is that generally true?
Yes, sir, it is. It's part of what we're providing.
Okay, so we do have some ability to monitor it, and the other is I would ask the applicant, uh, whether, you know, she, she would accept that amendment in, with, if the only alternative were to be rejected.
Yeah, could you come to the podium, uh, Ms. Markley?
An amendment that would, would approve the use, but only if you advertise it as a one-bedroom.
And that was provided for maximum occupancy of three to four?
Three, three, not four.
Even though the bunk bed is two?
Yeah, for the, for the reason we're talking about it. We, we're trying to keep consistency here, and that's our rule, three to a bedroom, and what makes you
Oh, I see.
not in compliance is because you have a second bedroom.
Gotcha, yeah. Okay, I could do that.
It may be the will of council to approve a one-bedroom,
Mm-hmm.
which would give you the ability to advertise it and rent it as a one,
Right, but-
but you would be in violation if you advertised it and rented it as a two.
Okay. I could do three people, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
Well, since we always have had a compliance problem, and since we're making this kind of concession, I would hope a condition would be if it's ever advertised at more than one bedroom, that it would be grounds for the revocation of the conditional use permit.
Mm-hmm. But it can be advertised fitting three?
One bedroom, three people.
Three people, mm-hmm.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Tower?
Um, well, I would, uh, like to amend my motion, uh, then to approve this as a one-bedroom, three people, uh, with the condition that if it is violated, that, that be grounds for immediate revocation of the conditional use permit.
Second.
Do I need to do that? I, I'm, I'm, I'll make the motion, then as a matter of discussion, I asked the question.
The reason I'm mentioning it, because in these other things about compliance, they talk about this process that we have to go through, all this evidentiary stuff. I'm just trying to establish, and for making this special exception, that the applicant has agreed to what constitutes a violation and what constitutes evidence of a violation, so therefore, we're not running into this vague area as the who shot John, that we, it's a definitive status, a definitive piece of evidence. Well, let me, I'm open to always to legal suggestions. Well, I, I think legally, it would have to come back to you at council, but what your direction would be to staff, if you ever find, you know, one occasion that it's advertised for more than one bedroom or three people, we're to bring that back to you immediately. And that's the way we would interpret it and apply it. Correct, Mr. Tahan?
Yes, sir. It gets the same effect. I have no problem with the words.
I think you have to revoke it. I don't think, I don't think you can tell staff to revoke it. There's a due process issue there.
Okay, good. Okay, we have, uh, a motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, second. Any other discussion? All right, if we can ask the council.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of nine to two, you have approved the application as amended with, to be one-bedroom, three people, and if advertised, it would be back to council immediately.
Okay, there's no, uh, further business for tonight. Mr. Rouse?
Just want to state, just want to state for the record, um, the lack of consistency in, in approving and denying these short-term rental applications, uh, particularly one, um, on the applicant tonight who had impervious service within their neighborhood, and there was no, you know, legislation or prohibition that prohibits them from widening their neighborhood or using concrete, however, whatever size they deemed fit. They wanted to pave their whole front yard. They can do it. There's no prohibition on that, but yet we deny the application because it, it did just that. Um, so I, you know, going further, I know we, this is a, it's a matter, we're still ironing out the details and all the kinks. I think it's important that we build up consistency for applicants, um, coming forth through city council, um, you know, considering again what happened with, you know, the approval of Mr., Mr. Coe earlier, um, when he thought he was grandfathered in, um, and then coming to terms, found, found out he wasn't, but yet he came forth, started paying taxes on it. Um, I think we have to be able to make it, um, to create this pathway that people who think they're our, our grandfather and wish they aren't, wish they really aren't, create a pathway where they feel comfortable, comfortable coming forward, um, and seeking, uh, CUPs for, for this, because, um, if, if not- this, because if, if not, I think, you know, being that we are shorthanded when it comes to the enforcement, we can particularly see short-term rentals throughout the city and not coming forth, just waiting to be caught. So again, I, I just like to hope that we can build up more consistency, and I'll be speaking to the city attorney on the applicant tonight, because I don't, I don't want to be held liable for a decision of denying the applicant for when they had the right to do whatever they want to their property in the first place. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tower?
I'd just like to make one comment, since we had one citizen who seemed to think I was making promises about what you as a council would do. Let me assure you that if I said that, I misspoke, I, I might have been talking about what my general intention was, or what, but I didn't mean to be, I didn't mean to be promising anyone that you would vote in any particular way on any particular application. Thank you.
And I think our intention going forward is that, you know, do come up with those rules that do provide consistency, you know, in a, in a very tough and emotional subject. Okay? That concludes our business for the evening, and I thank you, we are returning.